Where is everybody?
George, I asked in the comments, they said, "What's he is?"
Yeah, I know the feeling. Roll call, please.
Mayor.
Present.
First Ward. Second Ward.
Here.
Third Ward.
Here.
Fourth Ward.
Here.
Fifth Ward.
Here.
Sixth Ward. All present, except for First Ward and Sixth Ward, you're in.
Thank you. First item, please.
Whereas Charles E. Pierce passed from this life on July 21st, 1993, at Lee Memorial Hospital, whereas Mr. Pierce was a life resident of Fulton and operated Bailey Electrical Service in Fulton for many years, whereas Charles Pierce retired in 1985 as a captain with the Fulton Fire Department, whereas Mr. Pierce was Navy veteran of World War II, whereas he is survived by his wife Gloria of Fulton, two daughters, Yvonne, Bevac of Johnstown, Ivy, Freiter of Avon, two sisters, Nellie Cunningham of Fulton, and Jessie Burnham of Hannibal, a brother Giles of Fairhaven, four grandsons, and several nieces and nephews. Whereas the mayor, members of this council, and all of his friends, neighbors, and acquaintances will miss this kind and gentle man who both personally and professionally touched so many lives, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the members of this council share this great sense of loss with the family and friends of the late Charles E. Pierce and do with deepest regret take official notice of the loss of Charles E. Pierce. And be it further resolved that this resolution of respect be spread upon the official records of this common council meeting of August 3rd, 1993, and a copy of it be transmitted to the immediate family of the late Charles E. Pierce.
Motion, please.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Two, please.
Resolve the following bills are approved for payment. Northern, Batuminus, $7,216, and $4,884 for blacktop. Babcock Oil, $2,309.56 for diesel and oil. Swiggle Solid Waste, $9,477 for tipping fees. Voting Machine Service Center, $1,110.74 for repairs to voting machine. All are budgeted but are above the $1,000 charter limit and requires the council's approval.
I'll move it.
Second.
I got a question on the voting machine. Is that covered by insurance?
Yes.
Don't we have a $1,000 deductible?
No, not on that. It's 250, I believe.
Deductible?
Yeah, so they already reimbursed us whatever it was, minus the deductible.
Oh, so that's the total?
That's the total bill minus the deductible.
And then we'll get money back?
Yeah, we already have.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Three, please.
Resolve the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the utility line easement for the YMCA.
Motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Four, please.
Whereas the meeting this council held on July 20th, the city clerk was authorized to direct it to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of August 3rd relative to a proposed amendment to subsection 78-25C of the Fulton City Code entitled Rental Permit Fees. This amendment would exempt the mill and Toll Path Tower Apartments from inspection of their apartments by the city and from payment of fees for said inspections. The mayor declares the hearing now open.
Anyone wishing to be heard? Counsel? Pardon?
They are inspected by the state of New York, both places, and that was what the consideration was, to take the fee and void it out from the city because there's no sense in costing them twice, and the people who live there, senior citizens, are on fixed incomes as it is. So that was the thought behind that, of not having to inspect them twice, especially when they're already done by the state.
I got a question for Steve.
Yes.
Steve, is there any part of the inspections that the city does that the state doesn't cover? Do we have a more strict code for apartments than what the state does?
No, I think it's the same code. The fire department does inspect periodically both facilities in common areas anyway.
They inspect the common areas?
Yeah.
The fire department inspects the common areas?
Right.
They don't go into various apartments?
Only on invitation, which there ever has been one to my knowledge.
Yes.
I'm the manager of Fulton Mill Apartments. We have every system in our building inspected every year. We spend well over $2,000 to $3,000 for all the various inspections, which include the sprinkler system, the heating system, the intercom system, everything in the apartments, including the intercom system, the emergency ambulance system. Everything is checked every year. I could gladly give you copies of the inspection reports every year if you wanted them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, public hearing is closed. Motion, please.
I'll move it.
Second it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Why is that, give us? Three?
Gives us three.
Okay, I vote in favor of the motion.
Motion is carried.
Aye, please.
Whereas the meeting this council held on July 20th, the city clerk was authorized to direct it to advertise for a public hearing to be held on August 3rd, common council chambers relative to special use permit request submitted by Fay Beckwith for a property located at 604 South Forest Street for the purpose of establishing a real estate office. The hearing is now declared open by the mayor.
Any comment? Counsel?
Can you tell me what borders either side of that property?
Yeah, McDougal's on one side, and...
Gantley on the other?
He's on the other. And then comes me, my wife.
Okay, McDougal is zoned as what, in there, do you know?
McDougal's own, that's his house, that's the house, not the business place. The business place right around the corner. He's zoned residential. Gantley is, well, the house that Fay is proposing to change is zoned residential. Gantley's zoned residential. The rest, me and my wife are all zoned R3, except for our house, which is also residential. Across the street is all commercial, including the residence.
And Fay is, that's an R2 there now, is it Fay?
My understanding is presently an R2.
An R2. Honey, ordinance for years, even when I applied for a change, recommended that whole street be commercial.
That's why my next question is, is if we're going to upgrade his zoning in one spot there or use a special use permit, I don't see why you don't go from where the commercial property or the R3 starts and continue it to the corner where the insurance company is, and you were doing so that that takes care of that side of the street?
That whole thing would be commercial.
Should all be commercial.
Ninety-nine percent of business in there right now.
And industrial. Should all be commercial.
Did you say that your area is still residential? Your office, house, and the beauty shops?
I'm R3. And the beauty shops are R3. The houses are R2, which is ridiculous.
What's the difference between 2 and 3?
2 and 3? 3 permits business-only service, no retail. Pardon? What'd you say, Diana? Does make a difference, doesn't it? No, I frankly never understood that. I remember when a zoning ordinance was passed, it was quite a meeting. Frank Ash was there, incidentally. And there were so many discrepancies, and this was one of them. I forgot who raised that question about why is one side of the street commercial while the other side is residential? And the so-called architect who supposedly designed the ordinance said, "Well, we don't really know, but we need this right away," and they did, because the whole urban renewal project was hanging fire until we got a zoning ordinance. And he said, "We'll go back later on and straighten these things out." And the council's been trying to do it ever since. And one of the things that really got me was the 50-foot backyard requirement of everything in the city. So I asked him, I said, "What about these places downtown that some of them have zero backyards? Well, we'll straighten those things out as we go along." So it was a real hurry-up job. I think what he did is just took it from another city and pretty much incorporated it right into the city of Fulton.
Do any of the neighbors have a problem with this, mayor?
Well, they're supposed to appear. Everybody got a notice, I got a notice.
How do you feel about it?
He goes along with Frank Ash. I can tell.
One of the neighbors.
Looking at the recommendation, your honor, from the planning commission here, they're suggesting that those three properties be turned into C1.
Yeah.
And if that be the case, I would suggest that that would be that entire street from block to block should be just rezoned, the whole street C1 on that side also.
Couldn't agree more.
Unfortunately, though, that would probably require another public hearing, wouldn't it?
If it does, we can do that, too.
I think it would.
I think she's under a time restraint is her problem.
Well, we could do this one. Apparently there are no objections from the neighborhood, and if you want to submit zone change to C1 for your three properties, we could do another public hearing and make the whole thing C1.
Okay, I can do that. Why not? Things are getting a little dull around here, anyway. Okay, any more comment? Yes, Fay?
Is there anyone here this evening?
I think I'm the only one.
They represented, just no dissent whatsoever. Their only concern was with the backyard. They wanted to know what my intended use was for the green area behind the house. But for now, it's gonna be green.
Make great garden.
And we were all very supportive. I received first my phone call saying that we have no objection and we support and would like to have you for a neighbor.
Yeah, I know, as I say, I got a copy of the notice, too, and I'm sure everybody else did. Okay, public hearing is closed. Motion?
I'll move it.
Is this a motion to approve the special use permit?
Yes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Welcome to the neighborhood, Fay. Sure.
When I met with the planning commission, they recommended the zoning change as opposed to the special use permit because I was concerned about visibility and signage. What does the special use permit entitle me to do?
Whatever your application was, what'd your application say?
Well, it didn't say much. I specifically stated that I needed visibility, to increase my visibility. I need signage, and I need paving, about 2,500 square feet of paving in front yard.
No, I mean, did you make an application for a real estate?
I discussed it at length with everyone, and nothing has appeared on any of them.
Well, what was your, wasn't there a formal written application?
Yeah.
And was for what use?
Real estate office.
That's what you're granting?
So I guess.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Welcome to the neighborhood. Six, please.
Whereas the meeting this council held on July 20th, all bids for one new and unused soft truck, cab, and chassis, for the city of Fulton DPW referred to the city engineer for his review and recommendation of ward to be returned to this council at this meeting. Whereas by memo dated August 3rd from city engineer Neil Beebe, he recommends that the bid be awarded to Leota Automotive. Whereas the council agrees with the recommendation made by Mr. Beebe, now therefore be resolved that the low bid of $45,804 submitted by Leota Automotive is hereby accepted and awarded to said Leota Automotive Services, Inc.
Seven, please.
Yeah, vote on it. I'll move it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
What do you want? Sure.
It doesn't pertain to this, but it pertains to equipment, trucks and things. When we went into recycling, we bought the three-man trailer, or however that's described, and they're not using it anymore. What has happened to that?
I don't know. Have to ask Buck Gray.
Well, if they're not using it, shouldn't it be sold or something?
That's one of the reasons why we wanted administrator, who can follow these things up, find out what's going on, what's being used, what's not being used, why it's not being used, and what we can do with it.
They said they're not using it because they have too many places to go to. But that's why I thought they bought it in the first place. But anyway, if they're not using it and that I'm going to use it, we should not let it just sit there and rot.
Yeah, you're probably right. Three-bed trailer, okay. Is that what it is, a three-bed trailer?
Ben, 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 B-I-N.
Separation trailer.
Wait a minute, who's chairman of that committee?
Lincoln.
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 Give it to him, he's not here.
Is your soft truck gonna be just using the soft?
Yes.
I'll find out. Buck's on vacation this week. When he gets back next week, I'll find out. All in favor? That's as far as we got.
Aye. Can we vote on that?
I don't know, I didn't think you had to vote on it, but as long as you want to, it's okay with me. Opposed? Carried. Seven, please.
Whereas the meeting this council held on July 20th, the city clerk was authorized to direct it to advertise for a public hearing to be held on August 3rd relative to two proposed local laws, one of which would amend section 10 of the Fulton City Charter entitled elective city officers' terms. One of the local laws would amend section C10 to say that the term of the office of the mayor and the alderman shall be three years, and the other proposed local law, which would amend C10 of the Fulton City Charter, would say that the terms of the mayor and the alderman would be four years. The hearing is now declared open by the mayor.
Comment? Phil?
My name is Phil Blair. As I told you at the last council meeting, I have a petition with signatures on it that would like to see this put on a referendum on a November ballot.
It will be, if it's voted on by the council.
Well, even the city administrator was part of this petition. A city administrator, a four-year part-time mayor, three-year full-time mayor.
No, a city administrator doesn't have to be on the referendum.
Well, the thing is, is I don't think the council should be the one setting the policy for the city. I mean, I think it should be put up to the citizens of the city.
Well, I guess you're entitled to your opinion. The term of office is mandatory, does have to go to referendum. And if voted on by the council, it will. I mean, if they vote that they want it to appear on the ballot, then that's where it has to go. Council can't change the term of office without a referendum.
How many signatures would this council like to get this on the referendum?
The municipal home rule law defines the percentage of signatures required. My recollection is, and I'm speaking from the top of my head, I'm not looking at the statute, I think it's around 10%
10%.
Of the registered electorate.
Okay.
You have to submit those, and again, I'm speaking off the top of my head, you have to submit those to the city clerk for verification. You may have a problem, too, because my understanding is, and again, I'm just not looking at the statute, is you have to be careful because you can only, generally, anything that goes on a ballot must be a single subject issue, i.e., should the city of Fulton have a four-year term for mayor? And then a separate question would be, should the city of Fulton have a four-year term for alderman? There's a danger...
All right, I understand what you're saying.
There's a danger that the, there could be some, a petition to invalidate the balloting because it's more than one subject. So you've got to do some legal research because it's, there's a lot of hoops to jump through.
Well, we can run three petitions and give the people the choice of what they want to see on the ballot.
Certainly, certainly, and that would be the safe hedge if you get the required number of petitions, and then the clerk is required to place them on the ballot.
Why?
So it would be easier to perhaps just...
I don't understand something here. It's gonna go on the ballot.
Right, right.
Anyway.
He's got some other...
Why do we need the petition?
I think he's looking at the city administrator position being on the ballot.
Is that what you're talking about?
Right, right.
He's got a couple other things.
If you want to do that, fine. Remember, it has to be noticed on the, for the referendum, at least 60 days prior to election day.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alice?
I suppose I have to introduce myself. Alice.
This is Alice Levine.
Saboda.
Saboda, I'm sorry.
My husband would kill you. I only want to ask a question. Before they put this on the ballot, is it, can you put something for the city when we have the governor's election? You know, this is gonna go in the election machines. Do we have to have it just at a certain time? This has to be just for Fulton, when you do this for the four-year term?
It can be right in the general election.
Can be on a general?
Yeah.
Could it be like if you wanted mayor for four years and the alderman for three years, so that you'd always have an experienced one? Would that have to be a separate issue?
Yes, each one would have to be itemized separately to vote on.
I think there'd be safety in that, because when new people came in, you were new, three new aldermen, and it was tough, as you know. With everybody coming in new, it seems like if we keep experienced hand, the mayor or the council.
Well, some cities have staggered terms, and somebody proposed that, which, or the alderman, which...
I proposed it last time, because I think it's a good idea.
It is a good idea. I just don't know if we can do it all at once. I mean, it's a big mouthful, and I'll try to swallow it.
Well, we won't let it hang like what you said, you know, like the...
But it's a good, that is a good idea, Alice.
The coating and the zoning still hanging, well, we'll try to get this taken care of.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Anybody from the council?
I have a couple questions. How is this gonna appear?
Well, I thought we would vote separately on the three and the four-year, and see, you know, what the council preference is.
Okay, vote here to say if we would rather have a four-year mayor term or a three-year mayor term?
So only one of them would be on the ballot, right?
Yes. Yeah, I think two of them would be pretty confusing.
Yeah.
Now, then, but that would be one, one of the propositions to vote on.
Yeah.
And then the second one would be pertaining to the alderman.
Right.
Okay. Because I think personally, I don't mind extending the mayor's term, but I think the alderman's term should be, should be two years. That's an opportunity for people to see their alderman a little bit more. The mayor, I can understand, and that would provide some consistency, but I think an alderman's term should be two years, give him a chance to get out and see constituents.
This is what I've heard, too. Leave the alderman at two years. Let's put it on the ballot and let people decide.
Yeah. Anyone else in the council? Okay, public hearing is closed. I think the first resolution, Joe, let's make that for a three-year term for the mayor.
Okay, the first, the first local law has a term of three years for both the alderman and the mayor.
What do you want, the mayor and alderman both?
That's what the proposed local law says.
It's not individual, not alderman, not mayor, all.
Yeah. Well, I prefer the local law so that reads three years to four years for both.
Can't we just leave the alderman off?
I don't think so. I think we're gonna have to do it over again.
Spencer's nodding yes. Why did...
What?
What, you just want to change the mayoral term?
Yeah.
Surely, why don't you just propose it separately?
Separately?
Sure.
Okay.
Why don't you go for a four-year term?
So this would be a resolution for the mayor, term of office for the mayor for three years.
Well, how does everybody else, does everybody else...
Is it gonna be one for three or four?
I've only got one thing to say, John, and as you know, and all of us that came on new under the council, okay, is that when an alderman is replaced, and you have a two-year term, it takes him anywhere from six to nine months to find out what he's doing and what's going on here. He gets to effectively do something for you probably six months, and then he's out campaigning and going and running for election again. I don't really think that you're gaining the most from your elected official with the two-year term. I think the three-year term for an alderman could give him a chance to really do some programs and work for you because he's got his feet on the ground. And that's, you know, in my opinion, the mayor, it could either be a three or a four.
We tried a four, what, two years ago, three years ago, something like that, two years ago, and that was defeated, so I would suggest we try it for a three-year referendum to start with, and then we'll do a separate resolution for the alderman for three years.
Ross, we're on item seven. New term for elected officials. I can speak, of course, my own personal experience, two years is simply nowhere near enough time for a new mayor to get his feet wet, to get organized, to organize program, get something moving, and a two-year time. moving, and a two-year time, that by the time he's got that done, he's getting ready to run again. And this is, this is a serious handicap for the city. And I think the same thing is true with the alderman. You know, what you're getting, you're getting shortchanged, because you've got all your elected officials spending half their time preparing for election. And whether they will admit it or not, and this is not true of everybody, but some of the elected officials, when they make a decision, their ear is geared towards, what do the people want? What do they want so I can be sure to be reelected? Not necessarily what's best for the city. When you have a longer term, they're not that much concerned about that problem. And if you'll notice, there are very few two-year offices in this state, even in this country. They are mostly four-year terms. And this, you know, gives your elected official a chance to get something constructive done that's best for the city, not for him or her. Joe?
George, when would this, this wouldn't take effect this year, it would be on the next term, right?
Yeah.
Wouldn't take effect on this term?
Oh, no, no.
For the upcoming election, it would be two years down the road.
Be the upcoming election, yeah. Oh, no, I'm sorry, no, the one following that, yeah.
One following this note.
Right, yeah. Yes.
We're talking about the three-year term for the mayor. Is this still keeping this as a part-time job? Will there ever be the question that this could go to a full-time job instead?
No, that isn't, not, it's not going to be a full-time job. No, really a full-time mayor, you're going to ask somebody to give up his job if he has one. If he doesn't have one, maybe you wouldn't want him anyway.
Full-time mayor, pay him a good salary, so they do have the time to do the job the way it should be done and forget a city administrator.
Okay, let me ask you this. If you had a good job paying you a substantial salary, and maybe had accumulated pension and other benefits, and you got elected mayor for three years or four years, and at the end of that time, you're out, now you're no longer mayor, you also no longer have a job, you no longer have your pension and other benefits, how would you feel about that?
There's a lot of people who don't handle time, they're just running for mayor.
Yeah, maybe those-
They're either a choice, the politicians are being worse, they're making a risk, they want to-
Maybe, maybe those aren't the people you'd want for mayor.
No, there's a lot, especially in today's, there's no job security anymore.
No.
If you're a good mayor, you can get elected again.
It's obvious you'd never run for political office. Well, anyway, that isn't the question that's before us. Is there any other comment? Alice?
We mentioned that the people, or Jimmy said that the people wouldn't elect, you know, for four years. Well, when the aldermen are running, or any of the candidates are running, why don't they talk to the people? A lot of people don't come to the meetings and don't even read the papers, and then when it comes to voting time, they say, oh, four years, they don't know why it would be good, or why it would be bad. And those people running for office should really explain it, they're people that they're trying to get their votes from, that this would be a better vote if they also voted in the three-year term. Because that's part of the huckstring of candidates, is they've got to sell themselves and let them sell the whole issue, that if they stay in three years, they'll be able to do a better job.
Right, you're right. I guess it's, it's like selling any product. Diana?
The thing that I can understand is, well, everybody is running for an office. When you were running for mayor, you had a person running against you. Then you never, they had beautiful ideas, their campaign was great, and then you never see the people again. Why don't they come and, I mean, I can't tell people what to do, but can't you get, shouldn't they be able to kind of back off? Maybe their ideas were good, to talk to the people who finally beat them up, but as soon as they get beat up, they back off. You don't see, you're very-
Back off of what, Diana?
With the government, I mean, if they had such good ideas-
All the people that helped you get elected?
Their own party. The candidates have their own party, then if their party doesn't win, they back off. Even the aldermen that we're sat here, you never see them again, and they had great ideas when they were working up there. They just kind of quit.
You're talking about the people that backed the candidates?
No.
Are you talking about the candidates?
Candidates.
The candidates back off, is that what you're saying?
If they've lost the candidates.
Opposing candidate.
Whoever won the election or doesn't win the election.
Well, whether the opposing candidate do something?
Might continue helping out, just because they lost it, just as if, well, you've got to be a Republican, okay, I'm not a Republican, to heck, but I'm not going to do nothing anymore. Or vice versa.
Why are you only seeing when they're running for office?
I think it depends on the person. I lost once and still stayed involved, you know. I think it just depends on each individual. Some people stay involved and some don't.
Can't tell them to do what they're not supposed to do, but it always seems a shame if they've got such great ideas when they're campaigning, and then you never see them again.
Some, some people take defeat badly and think that if the, if the community didn't want them, then to heck with the community.
It's a good point, you have to, I guess, get inside their head to try to figure that one out, Diana, and I've never been able to do that. Anyone else? Okay. Public hearing, I guess I closed it once before, I'll close it again, this time for real.
How, are we going to now vote on four years versus-
Vote on everyone separately. Three years mayor, three years council, three, four years mayor, four years council. Okay, first resolution will be placed on the November ballot. A choice for the, what is this, this section?
Term of elective officer, C-10, would be, the term of office of the mayor shall be three years, and term of the office-
Just the mayor.
Term of the mayor shall be three years.
No, be effective nineteen, two years from now, nineteen ninety-six.
Could we put, could we vote yes for the three-year mayor and yes for the four-year mayor and put them both on, or we can only put one or the other on?
Yeah, you can do that, and then make a choice.
So it is possible to have both of them on, three-year and a four-year?
Okay. Now, this is for mayor for three years.
This would be effective January nineteen ninety-six?
Ninety-six.
How do you know, how do you know, if you put three and four years, how do you know who wins or loses? What if, what if the people don't want either? What do they, what do they vote for?
They vote no on both of them, they vote no on both of them.
Yeah.
There's not one proposal with three years, either vote for either three years or four years, to be, you want three years, yes or no, you want four years, yes or no?
Okay.
And the same with the alderman.
The one that gets the most votes would be the one that carries.
What they call vote no?
Jim, we closed the hearing twice. Go ahead.
What if they vote yes, by the same number of votes?
I mean, equal number of votes?
That's for seven years.
Yeah.
You can't put them both on.
You can't.
Nullifies the vote, I would say.
You can't do it. I don't think you can do that.
What?
You couldn't do it. The only way you could do it is to have them both in the same resolution, three or four year, and they vote yes or no on a three or four year.
The same resolution?
No, you can't do that.
You can't do that. But I mean, that's the only way you could. You can't put them both on. I would recommend we just go with one, maybe the three-year.
All right.
Yeah. Because like I said before, we went with the four-year and it got shot down. I've heard the same thing that Alderman Cook has had about the alderman being two years. I wouldn't propose more than three years for the alderman either.
All right, let's, let's go with, with one.
Effective January first nineteen ninety-six, other than provided by this act, the term of the office of the mayor shall be three years. That's the local law proposed.
Okay.
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Second ward.
No.
Third ward.
Yes.
Fourth ward.
Yes.
Fifth ward.
Yes.
Sixth ward.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Okay, three-year term. Mayor, carried.
Yes, Jim.
Yep. One, one, ninety-six. Okay, the same for a three-year for the alderman.
I'm, I'm just a little concerned about the, that three-year term, but I'll look into it. I'll make sure it's okay.
All right. Okay.
Three-year term for the alderman. Okay.
I'll move it. I'll second.
Wait, he's got to, he's got to read the resolution.
Same thing, only he says alderman.
Right, okay, same thing except alderman.
Okay, the alderman for three years.
Jim, you move it?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
First, or second ward?
No.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Now, if we voted on the three-year term, then we don't want the four-year, right?
We can, we can read it and nobody motion it, that's all.
Okay. Well, it's going to be the same local law, except it'll be four years for the mayor. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. You got a motion? Got to have a motion to vote on it. Ross moves it. I'll second it. Roll call vote.
That's four years for the mayor, right?
Right.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
No.
Fourth ward?
No.
Fifth ward?
No.
Sixth ward?
No.
Okay.
It's defeated.
Defeated. Okay, same for alderman, four-year term.
Second ward?
No.
Wait.
Oh. Motion?
Motion.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Second ward?
No.
Third ward?
No.
Fourth ward?
No.
Fifth ward?
No.
Sixth ward?
No.
It's defeated.
Yeah, okay. Eight, please.
Resolve this, are we going to?
No. Eight's referred to the city engineer.
Resolve that the current tree and stump removal add-on list dated July sixteenth, in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars, is hereby approved.
I'll move it.
What's the total of that, though? Do you have the total on that?
Fourteen thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars.
That's on top of just twenty-four thousand dollar contract.
On top of the original contract, yes.
On top of it.
Right.
It's twenty-two something.
Pardon?
It's twenty-two something. The original.
The original was twenty-three five seventy-three.
Second? Got a second?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
One opposed, carried. Ten, please.
Whereas Donald Frey of Wocat has applied for a vendor's license to sell farm produce August ninth through August ninth of ninety-four at Bullhead Point, resolve the council hereby approves the application subject to him getting the license as specified in the Fulton City Code.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Eleven, please.
Resolve the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the release of easement for the property located ninety-two War Street, presently owned by Robert Shirelli.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Twelve, please.
Resolve City Chamberlain be authorized to close out the capital projects.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
I'd like to ask a question if I could.
Sure.
Jimmy, can you tell me what, what these capital projects are that are being closed out?
Those are all ones that were still left open from a previous period that were, that are all finished. Those are all finished projects.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Thirteen, please.
Span resolution issuing some seventy-two thousand five hundred dollar serial bonds for the two pickup trucks and the saw truck, cab and chassis.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Fourteen, please.
Whereas James Brannan, West River Road North, has applied for a vendor's license to sell farm produce at Bullhead Point, resolve the council hereby approves the application subject to him obtaining a license from the Fulton City Clerk's office.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Under discussion, adopt a highway, the city attorney has found that if the city has such program on any highways within the city, that the city is relieved of any liability that may happen if any accident occurs to anyone involved or anyone else by reason of legislation that was passed by the state. So that if anyone is interested and knows anyone who wants to adopt a highway, please contact the clerk.
What's the procedure after that, then? Because I brought this up two weeks ago, because Rotary wanted to adopt Route Three from Bullhead Point to Hannibal Street. Twice a year, we go out and pick up the garbage and the stuff that's in the culverts on each side of the highway and along the highway before Memorial Day and River Fest.
I don't know, Jim, I, I think the best way to find out is to check with the DOT and see how they handle it.
Okay.
How it imagines, about the same, same procedure.
We're going to put stop signage, or? Well, that's what the state does.
That's why, that's why I say we have to talk with the DOT and see what they recommend. Item two, seasonal rates on Marina's been referred to the ordinance committee. And three is County Water District, Vern, I believe you wanted to address the council on that.
Thank you, your honor. I was here at a meeting last week, and after the meeting, had a brief discussion with a couple of the aldermen regarding the county water district. And subsequently, the chairman of that committee, or the chairman of the committee that I was at, called me the next day and asked me if I would come and speak to you this evening for a couple of seconds about the countywide water district. After that, I believe I, well, I know I did, I wrote each of you a letter requesting that I come to speak. And there has been some confusion, obviously, on the countywide water district. This project started about eighteen months ago with the formation of a sewer county water agency, of which there are seven members. I am from Fulton, there are members throughout the county. Back in the year, we studied some projects that we thought that would be, come to fruition rapidly, identified seven projects in the area that, on the outset, over a thirty-year period of time would cost about nine million dollars. Thus, what we have done is to approach the county legislature, they passed a resolution to go forward with this, and passed a resolution to have a referendum on this proposal, which will be held next Tuesday. The referendum to be held will be countywide, obviously, and what we have done is to produce a paper which shows what everybody is worried about, obviously, is how much is it going to cost me? We have broken, broken down the, the cost on a per-town basis, based on an average assessment, and a per-city cost. For the City of Fulton, for the first year out of the box, for the first project, which will be the creation of the countywide water district, which is estimated to be two hundred thousand dollars, and the upgrade of the water pipe size for the site energy proposed cogeneration plant of eight hundred thousand dollars, which is a million dollars, will cogeneration plant of eight hundred thousand dollars, which is a million dollars, will cost the average resident in the city of Fulton forty-one cents. It's forty-one cents total. It's not forty-one cents per, it's forty-one cents total. If all seven projects were done at once, nine million dollars, started tomorrow, the estimated cost for the city of Fulton would be, per resident, four dollars and six cents. That's what we're talking about. Forty-one cents first year, four dollars and six cents total. Now, I know that there are pros and there are cons. However, I think that we have to look down the road. We have to look to the future. We have to look for economic development. We have to look at all those things. I wanna make a couple of points. In the city of Fulton itself, and I have talked to Roger, and I have talked to John Farr, I've talked to Dr. Allerton, who was working with these gentlemen, I believe that they support this concept. I can't speak for Roger, and I can't speak for John, but I believe they support this project. It's a project that would ensure safe, clean water for the city of Fulton. I don't have to tell you what happened a couple of years ago up on the South End. You depended upon that water from OCWA. If the Saguaro County Water District takes over that line, the Owens Road Water Line, which you're hooked off of, which was done in my administration, the city of Fulton will save some money. In addition to that, the Miller Brewing Company, who many people from the city of Fulton and surrounding area work at the Miller Brewing Company and buy their own figures, their figures, not our figures, will save two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year in water costs. Now, I understand that some people don't like business, some people don't like industry. I understand all those things. But let me tell you, ladies and gentlemen, if you don't have business, and if you don't have industry, if you don't have jobs, you've got no money, you've got unemployment, and where are you going? The Miller Brewing Company laid off ninety-four people just recently. Ninety-four people. They compete, as other industries do, Alcoa, the Nestle Company, they compete with their sister plants. If you can save them some money, they may be able to increase production. And even if they don't increase production and increase jobs, if you can save what you've got, you're doing something today in this environment in New York State. I don't have to tell you about the tax situation in New York State. I think one final point is, is that, uh, I believe right now that our President is on, on the television, and he's asking you, or he's telling you, that you're going to invest, tax, invest, fifty-five cents a week. That's what your investment's gonna be for low and middle-income families in the United States of America. You multiply fifty-five cents a week times fifty-two weeks, and you're up to almost twenty-nine bucks. And we're asking for forty-one cents the first year to create a Saguaro County Water District from the city of Fulton. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Vern. You know, this situation reminds me of what it was like when first the landfill was proposed and the furor that created. The solid waste, not solid waste, but the cogeneration plant. And, you know, everybody was so concerned about various things. And now, thank God, we've got 'em. All you gotta do is go to communities like Syracuse that are shipping it miles away, paying huge sums for it. Old Forge area where I have a camp, they just closed their landfill down. And I wanna tell you, you should've seen those taxes go up tremendous. My taxes went up almost a hundred and fifty dollars, and most of it was because we had no longer had a landfill. We just don't realize the blessings that we have. We have unlimited source of water. The only areas in the country that have that luxury are those on the Great Lakes. And let me tell you, the years to come, that's gonna be a mighty, big, important factor. Right now, believe it or not, the Southwest, yeah, Southeast, is having almost a drought, believe it or not, and they're hurting. And when industry sees that, you know, you can do with a, I'll get along with a lot of things, or without a lot of things, but you can't get along without water. And you can't make water. I know people, some people are concerned about the quality of the water from Lake Ontario, but believe me, that's not the biggest problem. If you don't have volume of water for industry and business, then you don't have them. And if you don't have them, as Vern pointed out, you don't have jobs. And if you don't have jobs, you don't have money. And this is what we're talking about. I think, at first, I was kinda dubious, but now I think it's another forward-thinking proposal that's gonna mean a lot to this area in the years to come. I just read tonight where the Anadaga County Water Authority, the one that has the pipeline, they just raised their prices nine percent. That means that you have somebody outside of the area controlling the cost of your water. With none of the Oswego County Water Authority, we would have control over our water. Plus, not only the volume of water, but also the price of water. And people, you know, right now, after this winter and this spring, and the wet years we've had, have forgotten the dry years. I haven't forgotten them. I remember years when people with wells had to draw water, had to buy water, put in their wells to have enough water to function with. And, you know, it'll happen again, because these things always go in cycles. And as the consumption of water increases, that problem is going to increase. This is an insurance that you'll never have that problem. And let me tell you, that's a big advantage for any area to have in today's world. Water is one of the most sought-after commodities in the world. And an awful lot of countries and states and communities would like to have Lake Ontario at their back door. Vern?
Your Honor, I would like to ask the, the council to amend the resolution that they passed at the last meeting. I believe the resolution said that you supported the, the water district in something, and I don't have it in front of me, but there was a tag at the end. I think it's vitally important to the city to consider passing a resolution that's not clouded. And I think that the resolution that you passed before was clouded, it was written up in the papers that way. I don't have a prepared, a resolution or anything like that, City Attorney, if, if that's your desire. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil?
According to neighborhood-based initiative survey, Oswego County has the greatest proportion of wetlands in New York State. As far as the water districting program goes, I personally am against it, for the simple reason is, is we're gonna invest a lot of money in water, and nobody's giving any thought to sewage. If we want industry to come in here, we're gonna have to supply sewage. And nobody's brought that up. I mean, how do you get rid of waste if you're supplying a lot of water?
Phil, many, many industries that come in, if you supply them water, a lot of them will build their own sewage treatment plant. If you look at those in the area right now, which ones have, have their own treatment plants?
Now, how come we haven't been able to attract more around the city of Fulton? We have all the water, we have the best water supply in the area, the city of Fulton.
Well, you have attracted.
We have more than an adequate water supply in this city.
We have, we have attracted, but we have to buy from the Anandaga Water Line right now. We, we don't, we're not self-sufficient on water.
And we also have a sewage treatment plant that could tap into it. How come we haven't attracted any outside business?
We've attracted Millers, we've attracted Scythe. And Millers has their own sewage treatment plant.
That's for their own in-house.
Yeah.
That's recycling, all, all of this is a...
So that isn't really a problem.
Oh, it is a storage tank, it's, it's a...
Oh, no, it's a sewage disposal plant, I'm sorry. And Armstrong has theirs. You can see Armstrong's operating. There was a right buddy of the highway, you see the solid waste coming out. Nestle, I believe, has one.
Well, one of the things I'm trying to get across is if we do pass this water district program, we're gonna sell Fulton right out of the, the water selling and sewage business.
Well, I don't think that's...
That's one of, that's the only saleable resource we have around the city of Fulton right now.
I don't think that's a big thing for the city. We're not making a lot of money.
No, but we should be, okay? We've given a lot of water, a lot of sewage away.
How are we gonna do that? In order to do that, we have to buy it from Aqua. We don't have our own water to sell beyond what we're doing now. We're already buying from Aqua. We're gonna continue to buy from Aqua, pay them, and then pay somebody else, or sell it to somebody else? That doesn't make any sense.
What's the matter with the wells in Fulton? They all bad?
No, our wells are, are at capacity, and they're not enough to supply our needs. We have to buy water from Aqua. Plus, another problem that's already happened here, what you gonna do in wells, if more wells get contaminated, such as the one that was contaminated by Miller? That one's out of production. That was a million gallons a day. How about the South Bay well? How about the South Bay well they found had too much iron in it? That was another million gallons a day. Now, suppose any of our other wells become contaminated, or wells for people out in the country, what are you gonna do? Now, you're talking about a source that can't be contaminated, that is...
Don't, don't say can't be contaminated.
Well, can't be contaminated as easily as the wells are.
I mean, would you go up and drink a glass of water out of Lake Ontario?
Do it all the time.
You do?
Yeah.
All right, secondly, Mr. Drone, I take that back. You said this, that the price would be stable. Oswego County Water Authority would be selling this water to distributors, so...
No, I said the water would be cheaper than buying it from Aqua. Vern's already made quotes on that.
Well, the citizens of the county would be buying it through a distributor, not from Oswego County Water Authority.
How do you know that? That isn't the way the plan is set up.
I believe it is. Thank you.
Yes.
I just have one question.
Yes.
My name is Joe Langley. Maybe Mr. Drone can answer it. That water that comes from Lake Ontario comes from an inlet pipe that's a mile offshore. Isn't that pipe size already the limiting factor in how much water we're gonna be able to grab?
See, that pipe, as I understand it, has a capacity of a hundred and forty-four million gallons a day. It now is using less than a third of that.
So there's, there's actually more capacity built into that?
Lot more, lot more. Yes.
I'd like to make a couple of comments, specifically on the water industry, Fulton Water Supply. I was very curious to see what Mr. Drone has said, because we've been trying to get him to speak at other areas in the county, and the county water agency, you know, sort of refuses to come. So I was, I was very interested to see what he's saying about Fulton. A couple of things as far as, a couple of corrections.
Can you keep the mic on? Yeah, I can, my place, I guess I'm also having a mic.
A couple of, a couple of corrections. Um, as I understand it from the plan, and I think Mr. Drone will bear me out, that basically the Oswego County Water Board, if it is formed, will be buying water from one of two sources, either the city of Oswego or the Metropolitan Water Board. So in essence, they will be buying water from quote-unquote "outside sources." Secondly, the Metropolitan Water Board, the nine percent increase, if I recall correctly, yesterday the Anadaga County Legislature increased the wholesale price of the Metropolitan Water Board by nine percent. So in other words, the Metropolitan Water Board being the wholesaler, their price is gonna go up nine percent. So that price is gonna already go up nine percent, whatever the county's gonna buy from them. So, so whatever figures have been quoted are probably erroneous already, because the price has been increased.
Yeah, but I understand the city of Oswego is gonna take over that pipeline as soon as their contract expires with Aqua, and you'll be dealing with a county, with the city of Oswego, not with Aqua.
The city of Oswego isn't gonna take over the Metropolitan Water Board line. As a matter of fact, the Metropolitan Water Board is probably going to build its own intake pipe off Burt Point.
That's right.
Because they're having some difficulties, and that line is gonna tie in the Metropolitan Water Board.
Well, let, wait a minute, let's not mislead people. Aqua does not own that line. They do not own that intake pipe.
No, not the intake, no, sir.
City of Oswego owns that.
No, not the intake pipe, right.
That's right.
But the line that your water's coming out from Fulton.
Well, yeah, but the point is, the intake pipe is where the water supply comes from, and anybody can put a line in that. Okay? And we can take that line, the county can, can condemn that line and take it over.
Oh, condemn the Metropolitan Water Board line?
That's right. That's right.
I'm not sure they can legally.
Sure they can.
Municipal water supply lines, I, I, I don't think so.
It isn't owned by a municipality, it's owned by Aqua.
By a public authority? Okay, I thought there was some, I, I know they have powers of condemnation. I know about that, but I think that might be, well, that would be an interesting... So is that, is that what the, is that what the Oswego County Water Authority is gonna do, is condemn the Metropolitan Water Board line?
I believe so.
Oh, that's very interesting. I bet they don't know that. Okay.
First of all, I'm not here to debate this issue with Sue, okay? I gave my statement. My statement stands, and, you know, I just don't wanna get into this. I gave the statement, there are true facts, you all have or had the, the report. It's not a debate issue with me, and I'm just not going to debate the issue. That's the way it is.
No, I didn't come here to debate Mr. Drone, Mr. Villet, I really didn't. I came because, as I said, I think there are some issues that, that address the city of Fulton and the entire county that haven't been brought up by Mr. Drone, but have been brought up by the report. The, the, the issue of cheaper water, for example. Have any contracts been signed with the city of Fulton regarding the price of the water?
No.
Okay, so you really don't know what they're gonna charge you?
Well, we can only go by what the proposal is.
Okay. You notice that the proposal even says that initially there would be a ten cent add-on cost.
Yeah.
So that's an initial cost, so that cost could go up as well. The proposal also says, although, that they're not gonna be hiring a lot of additional people at this point.
Well, let me, let me ask you this. You know, aside from those points, do you think that this overall is beneficial to the county? Do you think this is something that down the road the county is going to need and benefit from?
Not the way it's currently proposed, no.
Well, what do you propose? You know, it's awful easy to take shots at things, but unless you have something better, and I don't see anything better on the table.
Well, for instance, I guess that's what I wanted to sort of address with the city of Fulton. I, it, it appears even from the county's water proposal that the city of Fulton, in fact, has sufficient capacity, source capacity, both from the current Owens Road Line and from your own wells through, up through two thousand and ten. The county's report itself says that you're gonna need a peak daily demand of five million gallons per day, and you already have a source capacity of five point four million gallons per day. So...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, from what? From our wells?
From the, from the wells, and also the capacity that you have right now from taking out of the Owens Road Line.
I'm sorry, what, you're talking about Aqua's line?
The Metropolitan Water Board line, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
We don't have enough capacity from our wells.
No, no, I didn't say have enough capacity, well, that's another subject. The total capacity of your, your source capacity, the total capacity of your wells, if all of your wells are operating at capacity, and I don't know what your safe yield is of your wells, the issue is that you do have other sources here. For instance, you're developing, understanding Great Bear Springs, we're looking into that. And the county's report basically, or county's proposal suggests that there may be, there is a, a safe yield of not less than two million gallons per day, from which now you're only pulling one point two, and possibly up to four to five million gallons per day, safe yield from Great Bear Springs alone. So that by further development of your wells, you may very well be able to meet your...
Further development of Great Bear is never gonna match our needs. No way.
Well, see, the county...
And we're, we're buying, Roger, what do we buy from Aqua now?
We could get three million gallons, she's correct, we could get five and a half. Okay.
So we're already buying a lot of water from Aqua?
Well, well, no, I, I, I think you could get three million, but you're only getting like three hundred thousand now, is that, is that right?
There is, for the time of year.
Okay. I, I'm just, I'm just using figures from the county's proposal, you know?
And this is a...
Because I'm not here to debate the figures here, I'm just using from the proposal.
Well, but you are debating the figures, I'm sorry. That's exactly what you're doing. I mean, you're trying to point out that Fulton is self-sufficient, and that's not true. And we don't know down the road whether Fulton is gonna be self-sufficient. If any of the plants in Fulton expand, as General Foods has done several times, then we are even a worse position than we are now. And if any of our wells fail or become contaminated, then we're in a, a much worse position. That's, that's the whole point. I think that's like insurance.
Sue, I have, I have a question also. What if in the town of Volney, an industry wanted to move in that required a lot of water? How would you propose that they, that they get their water?
Well, is it, I guess it's, I guess we're gonna get cooperative efforts here. For instance, well, just let me give you another example, as far as costs are concerned. Another thing that the...
Wait a minute, you didn't ask my question.
Well, I, I'm trying to give you an example. I'm trying to talk about cooperative efforts between municipalities. Okay? So does that mean, does that, well, I'm just wondering if the city of Fulton would[1742.01] Okay, so, does that mean, does that, well, I'm just wondering if the City of Fulton would not wanna cooperate with surrounding municipalities, is that-
No, we, we don't, we don't have a problem cooperating, but if we don't have enough water for ourselves, how can we give water to somebody in, in Volney? To me, a cooperative effort is the countywide water district.
Well-
That's a cooperative effort of, uh, everyone in the county.
Well, see, I guess when I talk about cooperative efforts, I talk about cooperative efforts to get water to people.
That's what I'm saying, countywide water district.
Yep, but, but, you see, for the first nine million dollars, you know the projects that you're gonna get.
Okay.
Okay, you know where they're located. All right? Um, there's no money in there, basically, for an additional line for Fulton. All right, they're going to buy the current Owen Road Line, it's not gonna develop a new source for you, you're gonna have the same source. It's not gonna develop a new line for you, you're gonna have the same line.
Why do we have to develop a new source if we already have a source?
Well, see, this is one, this is, this is what the county is saying that this, this is for, we're developing new sources of water.
It develops cheaper rates for us.
Pardon?
It develops cheaper rates from the source that's now, uh, the, on, the Oswego County Water District instead of the Anandaga County Water District. So, it's the same source but at a, at a cheaper rate, just because it's owned by someone new. To me, that's a benefit.
Uh, well, again, I, I, I'd sort of wonder about the cheaper rate for water. Again, you're starting with an initial add-on cost, okay? You're starting, and cheaper-
I'm told that if there's any more cost, that, that has to go to an additional referendum also.
Well, that's another thing we have to correct. See, part of the problem is all the, the-
Wait a minute, let's, let's get back still to the basic point that I raised earlier. What is your alternate proposal? I mean, you're, you're taking a lot of shots at this without coming up with anything, uh, in, in place of it.
Okay, basically, um, for the amount of money that you're spending for, for Scythe, and again, it's, it's my understanding that even if we didn't have the countywide water district, that the town of Scribo would be willing to absorb that cost as well. Um, for the amount of money that you're spending on Scythe, for instance, um, you could, um, you could do a great number of studies to determine-
I don't wanna hear about isolated projects. I wanna hear about an alternative countywide plan that you think is gonna do a better job than what's proposed.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get at, Mr. Villet, if you'll give me a chance, okay?
All right.
I think the, um, I, I think the role of the county could be, and if it had been over the years, the role of the county could be first to assess all of the local water resources that you have and tell you exactly how much water you have and where you have it, and how best you can help it.
We know what that is.
Well, no, you don't, not in the whole county.
All right.
Well, I, I can tell you that, I mean, I can tell from my experience, you don't. Okay, I can tell you there are no safe yields or water budgets in the town of Scribo, for instance, for the Sandridge Aquifer. I suspect you don't really have a real water budget for your municipal water wells here in Fulton, that you know exactly the extent of it and the exact, and the safe yields for the entire aquifer.
That's not true.
Well, why is it then that Phoenix is having a problem in supplying water with a project that's proposed, a development, uh, because they don't have enough water?
No, that's not true, sir, it's not because they don't have enough water.
Then what is the problem?
That's not the issue, okay? The, the issues are, the issues are in terms of agreements between the particular project and the municipality. It is not lack of water, sir. Lack of water is not a problem in the town of Scribo. See, this is part of the, I think people, there's a great deal of misinformation here, okay? And you're not gonna see it in the Syracuse newspapers, or in some of the other newspapers.
Why?
Well, for one reason-
Why wouldn't they take this information that you give them?
Well, for one reason, okay, the chairman of the Metropolitan Water Board is the president of the Syracuse newspapers, okay? And the Metropolitan Water Board is gonna be selling water to the county of Oswego. So, for instance, you're not gonna be seeing things in the paper about the fact that there are PCBs in Lake Ontario Water, okay? You're not gonna be seeing any of that information, and you're not gonna be seeing some of this, well, uh-
I would think the Metropolitan Water Board would be in favor of that kind of information because that would help to stave off the Oswego County Water Board.
No, you see, the Metropolitan Water Board is gonna be selling water to the county of Oswego. One of the reasons the Metropolitan Water Board wants this project is to, again, get tax relief, okay? Once you start selling water in these various towns from Metropolitan Water Board, they're tax exempt. The other thing is they're going to increase their markets. I can show you a copy of the nineteen ninety-one, uh, annual report from Metropolitan Water Board that indicates one of their biggest projects for the next year is, is the source of tax relief in the, in the county of Oswego.
All right, let me ask you this.
They stand to gain a lot from this district.
Is it your contention, then, if you're gonna develop industry as the county wishes to do in the industrial park by the airport, and I'm sure there are others that are, uh, also possible, that the existing water supplies are sufficient to supply them?
I think, I think the issue is going to be in terms of, um, transmission facilities and not source supply, and I think you have to separate the two.
That doesn't answer my question.
Well, you want a yes or no answer to a question that can't be answered yes or no. There, there are two issues here, okay? There are transmission facilities and there are source supplies, all right? What they're trying to tell you is that your source supplies are inadequate and you have to go to Lake Ontario. I think there are some serious questions about that, about that issue.
It's already been proven in the past, I, I can remember plenty of times when water, as I pointed out before, was not sufficient, when people's wells dried up, there was an article in the paper by a woman in Altmar who said the very same thing. And, uh, I know personally of, uh, other people who've had that problem.
Okay, let me ask you a question, do you think that the woman in Altmar is gonna get water to her house for nine million dollars and four dollars a year?
All right, so Altmar is, all right, how about my secretary who lives on Chase Road? Now, there's many times when she's had to replenish her wells by buying water, and there are others that I know of that had the same problem on their dry years, and we do have dry years.
Mm-hmm, but, see, this water district isn't gonna get water to her house.
How do you know that?
Because it-
On Chase Road?
Sir, the, the district basically is gonna provide for the development of major transmission facilities.
Right.
They're saying here that they're going to sell major trunk lines, they're going to sell to industry and to municipalities. Any local water districts, you're still going to have to find. So, the City of Fulton is still going to have to develop a water district for the, for your secretary in Chase Road.
No, the, the different communities and the towns are going to have to, of course, form water districts.
That's right.
That's the only way-
That's right.
-that it can be handled.
Sure.
It can't be handled on an individual basis, of course. But the, uh, Oswego County Water Board is gonna provide the transmission lines and the water to those districts so that they can supply the inhabitants.
Well, you've, you've, basically, it's going to supply it through your own municipal system. If you notice the proposal, it's not going to quote-unquote "interfere with the operation of your system." So, it's gonna provide quote-unquote "major trunk lines." In this case, it's not even gonna provide you the trunk line, it's just gonna buy the one you already have.
That's not true.
But that's okay with us because as we develop more wells and we want to expand, we can expand into Granby or Volney as, as the supply permits. So, that, that's not affecting the City of Fulton. The important thing is that this is providing major trunk lines, so you can attract industry. You know, you know what industry does to your, to your community? I mean, it, it brings people in here, so you have, uh, more people to shop in your stores. Uh, industry supplies a lot of dollars for school tax, uh, so you can, you can keep your schools up. Uh, it provides jobs for people who may wanna locate here. Maybe somebody who's now working at Scythe would find Fulton attractive and they're there because of water, would move into our community to raise their family, to buy our goods, our services, our, our gasoline. Uh, you know, with, with our dwindling sales tax here in Fulton and less state aid, we're always looking for other sources of revenue.
But, but see, is it, is it lack of water that's kept that from happening here in Fulton?
If you, if you're gonna spend, if I'm gonna spend forty cents a year for just the possibility of some industry wanting to locate here, forty cents a year is, is, is not a lot of money with the potential that, that you have. I mean, maybe an industry would not move here because they don't have the capability.
But, but, Mr. Krupp, for forty cents a year, remember, for forty cents a year, all that's going to pay for is the formation of a district and a line to Scythe. Now, a line to Scythe for forty cents a year is not gonna bring industry to Fulton.
It could bring people to Scythe who want to live to, live in Fulton, or, uh, or shop down here. It's not stretching it. How many people from-
How many people are gonna be working at Scythe?
I don't know the exact number.
Approximately fifty permanent jobs.
Okay.
Well, one thing for sure that we know, if you have water in place and you have the facilities to transmit it, you, it's a lot easier to bring in industry than it is to say, as it did with Scythe, "Well, if you locate here, we'll run water to you." And that almost, law, they almost lost Scythe because of that problem. If that had been in place, Scythe would have been there a long time ago. And this is what one of their objectives is, and I think it's a very worthy objective. And that's what they have in mind, uh, for the industrial park at the airport. They want facilities in place so they can say to an industry, "We've got 'em," not that maybe we can get 'em.
But see, we, we have an industrial park in the town of Scribo and it isn't filled up yet and they've, they can get the water and the sewage they need from the village of Phoenix.
It isn't filled up, but you do have industry there.
That's right.
You got more than you had when you started.
But, but the point is, okay, the point is, that we already have a place for industries, okay? And they're not coming here even though there's water and sewer. It's not water and sewer that's gonna bring industry here.
But they are coming there, oh, you can, you can see them right from four eighty-one. I don't know why you say that.
Well, there is, there is, there are room for more, we have industrial parks that are not used yet.
But, you know, this thing doesn't blossom out suddenly like a flower blooming, and it takes time. And you've got to make some kind of investment, and you've gotta have things available that they want and they need in order to say to it, "We've got water."
Well, see, th- those are two of the points that I'm trying to get at, for forty-one cents a day, okay?
A year.
Or forty-one cents a year, excuse me, forty-one cents a year, you're gonna get the line to Scythe and the formation of the district. For nine million dollars, originally, you were supposed to get seven projects. However, in addition to raising the rates yesterday, the Anandaga County Legislature voted to bond eight point five million dollars for the development of the transition lines in the town of, of Oswego. Now, the reason that's relevant, sir, is because the acquisition of the, the, those particular lines that the Metropolitan Water Board was going to build were supposed to be part of the original nine million dollars. Now, I find it hard to understand how nine million dollars is going to pay for one project which has been bonded just now in Anandaga County for eight and a half million dollars and six projects in addition. What I'm trying to point out is that even before the ink is dry on the project, the cost of those original seven projects has already doubled, and the district hasn't even been formed yet.
And what do you think will happen twenty years from now if we wait? What do you think the cost will be then? You know, this is, this is the problem with a lot of these planning. It's just as I pointed out, the, uh, trash burning plant and the landfill were luckily done years ago and saved us a lot of money. And the longer you wait on these things, as Syracuse knows only too well, on their landfill and trash burning plant problem, the more expensive it becomes.
Well, the only problem I have is, see, I wouldn't have a problem if, if, like the, uh, Anandaga County, if the Oswego Water, County Water District or Agency would give people the true cost for bringing water to their homes. If you look at what it's gonna cost the town of Oswego, for instance, that's eight and a half million dollars. Say even, there's twenty-two towns in the county, now, it's gonna even be more expensive to bring it. But let's just say it's the same cost in every town. You're talking roughly a hundred and sixty million dollars. Now, and that, and that would, that would bring water to your town. Now, if the water board would say, "Look, we are going to pay a hundred, bond for a hundred and sixty million dollars now," okay? For example, just for example, whatever it is. And, you know, you will get, you will get water, this will be the project, this will be an honest approach. What they're doing is trying to convince you and everyone else that you're going to get water for forty-one cents a year, okay? Or you're going to bring industry in for forty-one cents a year.
That isn't my, my understanding at all.
No, I don't, I don't think it's been very clear, sir.
But it still comes down, it still comes down to the point, you, you haven't come up with an alternative proposal. I think that this is something the county needs. I think it's something, if they don't do it now, they're gonna be sorry down the road.
Sir-
And I don't think you can afford not to do it.
Well, look, what I'm, what I'm trying to, uh, the alternative proposal, okay, is based on a consideration that was done in a study by the same firm in nineteen sixty-seven. Nineteen sixty-seven Barton and La Judas, okay, they, they, they looked at the formation of a Park County Water District in nineteen sixty-seven. The same firm that did this study did a sixty-seven study, okay? They looked at the alternatives for a, a number of municipalities, Fulton included, Fulton, Central Square, um, Mexico, uh, I'm not sure of Mexico, but anyway, several municipalities. And they looked at all the alternatives for how they could expand their water supplies. And one of the alternatives at that point was tapping into the Anandaga County Water District or using Lake Ontario Water. In each and every case, the development of local resources was a cheaper alternative than tapping into Lake, the Lake Ontario Water. The initial capital costs were a bit more, but over the long run, the operation and maintenance costs were considerably cheaper. Um, and that is why, for instance, the village of Phoenix looked around for another well. I would suggest that perhaps that is why the City of Fulton started looking at Great Bear Springs, because of the economics of the situation. The nineteen ninety-three report never compared economics, okay? They never looked at the alternatives, the economics of the alternatives that you have here. In fact, your alternatives may be considerably cheaper.
You're talking about, uh, a study that was made twenty-five years ago, okay? Since that time, Fulton has found that our resources are not sufficient. And you're only talking about, uh, two communities. There's a hell of a lot more in this county than Fulton and Oswego, while even Oswego, Oswego doesn't have anywhere near the wells that we have. You're talking about Fulton and Phoenix, that's only a tiny part of this whole county.
No, sir, I'm, 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 I could, I could, you know, I could show you the study, there were a number of other municipalities for branching out. It wasn't just Fulton and Fe- and Phoenix. The point is, in nineteen sixty-seven, they also considered, you said, "Why didn't we do this twenty years ago?" Because twenty years ago, the same con- concept was looked at and it was thrown out, okay? Because it was more expensive than developing local sources. This is not a new idea, this was brought up twenty years ago and it was rejected because it was the more expensive alternative. And that's what we're saying, if the county, if the county-
We could go on with this all night long, and I'm sorry, we have a long executive session ahead of us. And, uh, I appreciate your comments, but I'm gonna have to, you know, close it. Quickly.
Yeah, I'm just curious, uh, when you talk about the county, is this gonna benefit the small towns in the northern part of the county someday? Will there be a trunk line for them so they would have water? I mean, everybody relies on wells up there.
I know.
I mean, is this really realistic that it would benefit them someday, not just our bigger cities?
Yeah, it can't be, there really isn't any limit to it. Dinah?
I just have a quick question. When, uh, Nestle's went to build the cogeneration plant, they had to find out about water. They had to use four hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water a day. They said, "We have plenty of water to furnish 'em." That's supposed to be for fifteen years, they figure it's supposed to be for fifteen years, but if it's well maintained, it can go for as far as thirty years. Nestle was gonna save a million dollars a year by putting up the cogeneration plant. And they were gonna be using four hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day to run that thing. And I asked if they were gonna be paying the same sewer tax that we are, and they said, "Yes." I have not been down to check and see if they do or not because if they are, they're paying quite a bit of money. So, they have enough money if it goes for one, I mean, water for one direction, and it doesn't have enough in another direction. And then cogeneration took care of one factory, Nestle's. It didn't bring in industry.
I'm sure I understand your, your point, Dinah.
The water, I mean, why-
It needs a lot of water.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Didn't have plant, plenty of water, they said, to give it to 'em.
No, they don't have now.
That's, how many years, that's three or-
Not from our own sources.
Three or four years ago.
Yeah, the bottom line is, you got an unlimited source there, that's what the bottom line is. And my point is, take advantage of it. And then, as I said, an awful lot of places in this world wish they had it. Quick.
I was just wondering, uh, Jan probably knows, does, uh, Millers get, uh, water from the, uh, Anandaga Water Supply?
Yes.
Most of the water, 'cause Fulton can't supply it, right?
No.
They get it none from, from Fulton, from-
No, we don't, that's right.
They keep it here because- From the Anandaga Water Supply.
That's exactly right.
'Cause I worked up there and I know when they put the water in and why they had to do it.
I, you know, this, this has really gotten to be, uh, an emotional issue, I know, just talking with, with some of the councilmen. But, uh, you know, to me, this is, this is a forward planning thing. And yes, I work at Miller Brewing Company and it, it's beneficial for them. It's also benef, I think it's also very beneficial for the city, for expansion in, in the county. And I guess something that, that's bothered me since I've been here is, you know, you talk about forward planning. We have the, the source of water to the north of us, and we pay somebody to the south of us for that water. Now, to me, that, that doesn't make a lot of sense. And they, and sure, Anandaga County, they're gonna, they're gonna charge, uh, people who, who come off that line more than, than they charge, uh, people in their own county. Same thing we do when we sell water to, to Granby or Volney. Uh, they're at, at our mercy as to what we're gonna charge them, and we're at the mercy of, of Anandaga County with what they wanna charge us. So, it, it makes no sense to me. And I, I would like to, to suggest that, that we rescind our motion that, that we made the other night.
Yeah, this motion was, uh-
George?
Yes.
Could I say something? Okay, I haven't had a chance yet.
Sorry.
A few things, it seems to me from the people I've talked to, unfortunately, it's become an issue of us against them. It's really not an issue of water, it's like the county against everyone else. And I'm not comfortable with that, that's not a good enough argument for me. And you ask people for a better solution and they can't give you one. And if you can't become part of the solution, you become part of the problem, the way I see it. The lady mentioned, and I, I didn't get her name, but- Sue?
Sue Hammond.
Hammond. That Scribo would be willing to fund the entire project for Scythe. If you would please yield, for Scythe. And there's a good reason why they'd fund that entire project, 'cause they're gonna get the tax benefit from it. Every time industry locates in that end of the county, the people in that area pay little to nothing for the taxes on their property. It's because they've been able to concentrate industry in that area. It's because they've been able to concentrate industry in that area. Why do we wanna isolate ourselves and not share some of that growth and help reduce our taxes or at least keep 'em stable? Fulton, even though we might have water now, we do not sit isolated. There's Hannibal, there's Granby, there's Valney, there's all the other towns that have a lot of potential for growth, a lot of empty land there that could be used. We're talking about a delivery system. And I think we're wrong to go against that. Valid reasons, I haven't heard any really valid reasons, other than I don't want it. And to me, that's not good enough. I hear people say, "Well, I don't wanna pay another penny for anything." You know, what, what kind of reason is that if you're stifling growth? We don't stand alone. We'll all benefit. The entire county will benefit. And you don't have to agree with me and I don't have to agree with you, but it all depends on what point of view you're coming from. I would like to see taxes stabilized. We all benefit from county projects. We all drive on county highways and we'll all benefit from industry, whether it be in the city, like John said, for sales tax. Growth in the towns that people wanna locate and live here will benefit.
Now, I, that's what I've been doing right along. We're gonna be here the rest of the night. This thing has been hashed and rehashed and re-rehashed. I don't know how you can add anything new, but go ahead and try.
I just wanna bring back memories a long time ago when Oswego wanted Fulton to go in with their pipeline and Fulton refused. Didn't go with it. We didn't do it.
That's right.
We wouldn't be in this position today if we had gone, you know, with them. We would've been buying water from Syracuse. That's all.
Right, I remember that. Yeah.
George?
Okay. We're talking about the Forward Planning Committee. The, the very things that we hear, that we're not moving anywhere, the county's not growing, the city's not growing, it's all a paradox. We have an opportunity here now and everyone says, "No, we don't wanna grow." Even if you have a good delivery system, don't grow.
I had a couple of questions for Vern about the rates. I, when this came up two weeks ago, I didn't intend for it, and you mentioned that, that started out that we weren't against the concept of it, but we were against the rates that were being charged to the city of Fulton, 'cause we felt it was not proportional to the benefit that we were getting. And you mentioned about, um, buying water from Aqua or Metropolitan and selling it to the city at a lower rate. That's gonna give us a savings to the city of fifteen thousand dollars a year immediately, um, based on the amount of water that we buy. Later on, if, if the county can do away with the external user charges, it may go up to thirty thousand dollars annually. However, the four dollars and six cents that the average homeowner is gonna pay throughout the city, actually, everybody in the city is gonna be paying this tax, it comes to a, a total of fifty-six thousand dollars, a little over that in the tax, because it's not only all the homeowners, it's the city is gonna have to pay for it. In fact, every parcel is gonna be taxed except for cemeteries, federal buildings and agricultural, which we don't have agriculture. So not only the taxpayers at home are gonna pay the four dollars and six cents, but through county taxes and city taxes, they're gonna have to help us, the city government, pay for it. So that's where I'm saying that the amount that we pay isn't proportional to the amount that we save. And that's always been the comparison. They say that it's only gonna cost four dollars a year individually, but they didn't, nobody ever said how much collectively it was gonna be. But they did say collectively it was fifty thousand, or they said fifty thousand, it's more like fifteen thousand and possibly thirty later on that we're gonna save. So I just wanted to put that in perspective. That was one issue. And the other one, and there seems to be some conflict. Now, Vern, I'd like to ask you directly, who is going to sell count, uh, water to the county airport and the proposed industrial park out there? Would it come from the...
The county.
The county? John Crook and I met with Jack Tierney Saturday afternoon and I asked him that and he said that the city could sell the water.
He said, "Form a..." I don't understand how you could form a water district in the town. I would say that that was not feasible.
How we could form a water district in the town?
It's in the town of Valney, right?
Right.
The town of Valney would have to form a district.
But we've done it before. We have them in Valney and we have them in Granby.
I don't understand...
And we have a dedicated line out to the Valney School, I believe. And we could do the same thing to the airport, or we could have the whole thing be a water district.
That line, that line, that line will not be coming off of a city line.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. We, the city, would like to sell water to the airport and the industrial park and make a profit on it and the houses long there. This is gonna circumvent us, so we're not gonna be able to sell water to the industrial park and the airport.
Then the line out the Whittaker Road.
Are you gonna cut this off? I haven't one come across coffee mill.
Have, have the town of Valney, I would assume, and I, I would assume that this has been thought of before, form a water district out the Whittaker Road and form a water district and sell it to the water district, like you're doing everybody else.
That's what we would like to do.
Well, do it.
When you make money by selling water.
See, that's, I think that's, that's the whole premises. And I, Jordan, I know you don't want, I know you don't...
That's the whole premises of this. And I, I think, yeah, so you're gonna save thirty thousand dollars, fine. But if you can sell more water, you know, and you can, you can make money. And, and I have to tell you what, in your six-month water budget looks like, it's a disaster. You know? So you form a water district or you have the towns, you can sell all kinds of water to the towns. That's what this is all about. If you can buy it cheaper, you can't produce it. You can only produce so much. And if you can buy more for less, as John says, maybe you can make, make a couple of bucks.
Can I ask you a question too, Vern? I got a couple here. One is that once the water district, should it be passed, is intact, all right? And it encompasses the entire county. Is there ever any possibility after this legislation is passed to reduce the size of that water district?
It, it's a county-wide water district.
It can never be reduced if they do it county-wide, is that correct?
Um, that's a legal question. I, I would say no, Dave, but I don't know that question.
The second thing that I wanna ask is, wouldn't it make more sense that if you were going to try to accomplish a county water district, if you started with the small entity with a large game plan and go and enlarge the district as it paid for itself rather than encompass the whole thing and that way incorporate users' fees, versus taxing everyone that... Some of these people will never see water, Vern.
Yeah, you're, you're talking about a part, like, a Park, Park County Water District. The fallacy there is, is that if you talk about Park County Water District, those that are in the Park County Water District become exempt off the taxes. Example, okay? You, 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 you do a Park, Park County Water District or you do a water district along, along the North Road in the, in the town of Scriba, okay? And you're servicing Alpina and Scythe and Agamo Hawk, okay? That's one district, fine. Two hundred thousand dollars, form the water district, the whole town, yeah. Now, we have, we have a project where Miller Brewing Company wants to expand their production by three times and they need more water, okay? So now what we do is to form another water district over here for another couple hundred thousand dollars and all that, all that tax, all that assessment on that water line that we, that we form down on the North Road is exempt. We cannot use that for that district. So what you're doing is that you're taking parts at a time, okay? And you can't, what we're trying to do is do the whole at once.
Okay, I understand what your theory is.
Because it's cheaper.
Okay, I understand what your theory is. Now, the other thing that I wanna ask you about is if in fact this water district does encompass the whole thing, it cannot be reduced in size, naturally, the county's going to want to sell all the water it possibly can to gain the revenues, correct?
We want to build some trunk lines to get the, the, the water from obviously the source to the municipalities and to industry, okay?
So the idea is naturally to sell as much water as you can?
Absolutely. On a controlled basis. I mean, this, these seven projects over a period of time, nine million dollars, that's the estimated cost. We're not gonna do all nine at once. Hopefully, we're gonna start Scythe, maybe the Miller line next, uh, and so forth. Sort of committed to the Miller people and to the city of Fulton, particularly if something happens here in a couple of months. Certainly gonna make a, a real offer to do that.
Okay, I have a major concern with the system and the way it's set up. And you said the controls, okay? And that word, it really scares me when I hear the word control, all right? Because I think it's probably going to infringe on future water exploration for anybody that might want to do it by permit because they've got to apply to the county to do that, even if it is your own source.
I don't understand your question. If you wanted to keep developing your wells and so forth, that's up to you. We, we are not going to infringe upon any municipality that wants to continue their source, Scruple, Sandy Creek, Orwell, Plaskai, uh, the Big Bay area. If you want to, if you wanna continue your wells, fine. You don't have to do anything. You don't have to.
I personally, Vern, would like to see that in the three volumes of the proposed water district stating that in black and white.
Uh, well, I'm telling you, that's what it is. Believe it or not. Thank you.
The original resolution by the council accepts the Oswego County Water District in principle and, but opposes because it feels that the, uh, city would have a larger proportion of our share of taxes and was not therefore in the best interest of the city of Fulton. Now, you wanna modify that, Jan?
Well, we need to rescind that one first and then...
Well, you could rescind it in total, whole or in part, whatever you like.
Well, what, what I would, what I would like is to say that we support the county-wide water district.
We do though, that resolution. We say we support that.
Okay, then, okay, Jan?
What you wanna say is that we support it as proposed.
No, is that so?
George, I just wanna know about the vote. How is this gonna reflect on the vote coming up on August tenth, whatever this council puts?
I have no idea. Merely advisory on the part of the, the council, it has no, uh, bearing, of course. It can't control the vote.
All we did was give our collective opinion two weeks ago.
So this has no...
Had nothing directly to do with the...
The vote can just knock it out anyways, right?
Oh, sure, sure. Jan, what do you wanna do?
Would you read it again, please?
Yeah. Resolve the, uh, common council accepts the Oswego County Water District in principle but opposes it because the water rates are too high and will result in a large, larger proportion of our share of taxes, therefore it is not in the best interest of the city of Fulton, they are.
I, I guess I would just like to eliminate where it says opposes from opposes back.
So you would move to modify the original resolution, eliminating the portion that opposes the Oswego County Water District?
Yes.
How would it, how would it recharge, exactly?
Be my guest.
I think the best way to do this would be if, if the council, it would be to rescind this if they wished to and basically just say, uh, that they support the proposed Oswego County Water District and hold on.
I, I agree with that.
That's the simplest way.
Okay. Jan, you wanna withdraw your motion?
I, I didn't make a motion yet.
Oh, okay.
Want me to...
I will make a motion to rescind the, the...
Original motion?
Original.
Uh, it'll say, whereas this common council...
Wait a minute. You gotta hold on to the decision first.
Okay. To see if we want, if everybody wants to rescind...
Yeah.
Resolution.
Resolve that the common council resolution passed on July twentieth, nineteen ninety-three is hereby rescinded in its entirety.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, vote please.
Who, who seconded it, please?
I did.
Ross.
Second ward.
Yes.
Third ward.
Yes.
Fourth ward.
No.
Fifth ward.
No.
Sixth ward.
That's three.
That's three. Mayor?
I vote yes.
No need to vote, there's no tie.
Well, just make sure, just to make sure.
Okay. So the motion to rescind is carried.[1647.21]